I hit that kind of hard. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to our November school board meeting, November meeting of the Pulaski County School Board. I think before we start, I'd like to make mention of a couple of celebrations and a couple of families who need your thoughts and good vibes at this time. Mr. Hurst informed me before the meeting of the passing of one of our former football team physicians, Dr. Clary. And I do know that I had one of his daughter, his daughter in class, and it's a lovely family, and so we would like to keep them in our thoughts at this time. Did you want to add anything else, Mr. Hurst?
No, just, you know, Dr. Clary was just a wonderful person and spent several years, you know, getting to know Dr. Clary and his family. And of course, he loved Cougar football, and me and him, you know, needless to say, had that in common. We would be on the sidelines together. He would always, you know, did such a wonderful job of taking care of our student athletes, and he'll certainly be missed by our community.
Thank you, Mr. Hurst. And we'd also like to remember Deann Lindsay, who has worked in several schools in the, in the system, and was most currently a sped teacher at Pulaski County High School. And she's had, I understand, several jobs while she was a resident of Pulaski. At one time, I think, working as a journalist for the Southwest Times. And I know that her coworkers miss her terribly, and we would like to think about everyone who was close to her at this time also. We have a few celebrations as well. I told Mr. Benson, I feel like I'm in church, saying, "Do we have any celebrations or prayer requests?" We have a couple of celebrations. One of our own went all the way and received her doctorate this past week. Dr. Sarah Polcha received her, defended her dissertation and received her doctorate in...
Educational leadership.
Educational leadership. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And we have another celebration, and I'm going to probably, he would probably blush if he wasn't already sunburned, but our assistant superintendent and director of finance, Mr. Chris Stafford, was, just yesterday, elected to the Pulaski County Board of Supervisors in the Cloyes District, and we want to congratulate him as well. Okay, so, do we have any other celebrations or prayer requests? I'm kidding. Do we have someone to do the pledge of allegiance for us?
We do, Dr. Cash. Pulaski County Public Schools and Snowville Elementary School are proud to have Gregory Worley lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Gregory is currently a fourth grade student who is described by his teachers as a hardworking student who comes to school every day, ready to learn. His favorite subject is math, and he says his favorite part of the day is P.E. He displays a positive attitude in everything that he does, and is a friend to all. He is the proud son of Kevin and Ashley Worley, and Snowville Elementary, and Snowville Elementary School was thrilled to have him represent their school this evening. Gregory, would you come forward, and after you finish, if you will stay down front, I've got a citizenship certificate for you.
(audience) To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Dr. Sears, do we have some other recognitions tonight?
We do, Madam Chair, and we'll pause for a minute so the board members can go to the front.
Pulaski County Public Schools and Snowville Elementary School are pleased, oops. Pulaski County Public Schools and Snowville Elementary School are pleased to recognize Ms. Regina Alley as employee of the month for November. Ms. Alley is in her 15th year with Pulaski County Public Schools and is in her second year at Snowville Elementary School. Both years, Ms. Alley has worked as a one-on-one paraprofessional assisting students with disabilities in the classroom setting. Her job responsibilities are ever-changing, and no two days are the same in her role. She works hard to ensure that the needs of her students are met, in addition to working with the classroom teacher to assist other students in any way possible. Her students love her, and the smiles on their faces each day displays the excellent rapport that she has with them. Snowville Elementary School sincerely appreciates the time and work that Ms. Alley puts into her job every day. Would you please join me in recognizing our employee of the month, Mrs. Regina Alley? Pulaski County Public Schools and Snowville Elementary School are pleased to recognize Mrs. Summer Holliday as the teacher of the month for November. Mrs. Holliday is in her second year of teaching, first grade, at Snowville Elementary, and is doing an outstanding job. She is described as someone whose approach to teaching is solid and is rooted in research-based practices. Mrs. Holliday recently applied for and was awarded monies through the Teacher Mini Grant Program to purchase a program titled Secret Stories. This program has a multisensory approach to phonics instruction that she is currently using in her classroom. Mrs. Holliday approaches teaching with excitement, and students are very receptive to her style of teaching. Her classroom management is excellent, and a sense of community is evident, not only in her actions, but in the actions of her students. Many of her colleagues describe her as someone who was born to teach, and this is apparent when you walk into her room. Snowville Elementary School feels very fortunate to have Ms. Holliday, and we look forward to many more years of working with her in the future. I would just say, Ms. Holliday is the only teacher in the school system who I knew as an infant, so I'm very proud to recognize her as our teacher of the month. Our final recognition of the evening is for senior of the month. Pulaski County Public Schools and Pulaski County High School are pleased to announce Morgan Lee Farmer as senior of the month. Morgan is the daughter of Terry and Melissa Farmer of Pulaski. Morgan's nominating teacher stated that she demonstrates excellent leadership and mentoring skills while serving as co-captain on the football sideline cheer team and senior editor of the 2023 Pulaski County High School Yearbook. Morgan helps organize team meals for both home and away games. She also volunteers to help judge winter cheer squad tryouts. Morgan stayed after school, comes in during her days off, and has sacrificed her weekends and evenings to practice cheer, cover events and games, as well as to help edit the yearbook. In addition to excelling in her extracurricular commitments and responsibilities, Morgan has achieved high marks in her academics and has perfect attendance. Morgan has at least 100% average in each of her classes and has enrolled in an advanced calculus class through New River Community College. If Morgan isn't asked to do something, she will either ask what she can do to help or find something to organize, clean, or work on. She is more than willing to help out in any area. Morgan has a positive outlook, kind heart, and helpful attitude. She represents the Cougar student body very well and is Cougar pride. During her very limited free time, Morgan enjoys reading and playing with her dog. Upon graduation, she plans to attend Virginia Tech to get a master's degree in biochemistry. She would then like to attend the Virginia Tech Corrigan School of Medicine to become a doctor. Very pleased to present to you our senior of the month, Morgan Farmer.
recognition of citizens. The first public comment section, session, will be for persons who wish to address the board regarding items that are on the current school board meeting agenda. Items presented by citizens may be referred to the superintendent for research, who may report back to the school board at a subsequent meeting or through other communications. If you wish to comment about individual employees or their performance, please present your comments first to the superintendent. Such matters will not be discussed during an open board meeting. All comments are limited to three minutes. Do we have anyone who would, do we have our timer up? Do we have anyone who would like to address the board at this Okay, there will be a second public comment period at the end of the meeting for anyone who wishes to address the board concerning items that are not on the agenda. So now we come to the approval of minutes. Everyone has had an opportunity to look at the minutes from October the 11th, 2022 regular meeting. Are there any additions or changes to the minutes? There being none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from October the 11th, 2022?
Madam Chairman, I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes for the October 11th meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Ms. Porter?
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Gold?
Yes.
Dr. Cash?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Now we move on to the adoption of the agenda. Everyone has had an opportunity to look at the agenda. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda tonight? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as it stands?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Golden. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hurst. Ms. Porter?
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Gold?
Yes.
Dr. Cash?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Now we come to the consent agenda. I think everyone's had an opportunity to look at this as well. Take just a second and go over it again. Thank you. Our finance and HR departments have been busy. Is there any discussion concerning the consent agenda? I have one question. Surplus vehicles, are those vehicles that we are taking in or getting rid of?
Getting rid of.
Great, thank you. And that's probably my weak understanding of what we do with surplus vehicles. So is there any discussion about the consent, concerning the consent agenda? There being none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Hurst. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Golden. Ms. Porter?
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Gold?
Yes.
Dr. Cash?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you, everyone. Dr. Sears, I'm turning the meeting over to you to introduce the instructional focus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have two items under instructional focus this afternoon, or this evening. First is Snowville Elementary School's presentation.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. I'll step back a little bit so I can see the presentation myself, but wanted to begin this evening looking at Friday, November the 11th, is our Veterans Day program at 10 o'clock at Snowville Elementary School. That is a very big community event for our school, so we invite anyone who is willing and able to come out and join us on Friday at 10 o'clock. Upcoming dates, looking at our program on the 11th, of course, that I just mentioned, we have our students traveling on Monday, November the 14th, to Radford University for the musical Rainbow Fish. It's the first time we've been able to do that in quite a long time. I'm so happy that Radford University was able to allow us to come this year. Then December 5th is our holiday performance. That is sponsored by our PTO, so it is basically a Christmas musical, so we invite everyone to come out to that as well. And then finally, on December 8th and 9th, we have our growth assessments for students in grades 3 through 5. You all are welcome to come for that as well, but I would venture to say that's not anything you guys want to come to, but that is what we will finish up this nine weeks So our school-wide expectations, we start every school year with our Virginia-tiered systems of support and our behavioral school-wide expectations. So we start off with our school-wide expectations and trying to work with students on the behaviors we want to see and behaviors that we do not want to see. So we started off the school year with the teachers acting out basically behaviors that we don't want to see, and of course, that got the students tickled, but then turned around and modeled for the students the behaviors that we do want to see. So basically putting that into motion, if you will, with the teachers being able to act out, again, the expectations of being respectful, responsible, and demonstrating that they're ready to learn. We also just finished up our first nine weeks awards assembly, and you can tell from the larger picture on the screen that Ethan, needless to say, was the happiest little kid in first grade. But what I did here was just highlight some of the awards that we present. We have awards assemblies each nine weeks and recognize students for all As and Bs, all As, perfect attendance, but then take it a step further and look at students, most improved, and that could be in any area, as well as the kindness award. So that is something, again, that our community is invited to, but our students really, really like. We also do, and brought back this year, the accelerated reader award, and that is something that we haven't done in quite a long time, but students acquire points based on the number of books that they've read, and then we give a prize to the student who's accrued the most points at the end of the year in each grade level. Moving on, we were fortunate enough to have Virginia Tech come to our elementary school, and I believe they visited the other elementary schools in the county as well. But we had bug fest brought to us, so it was quite an adventure. I think the students had a really good time. We were able to bring in our third, fourth, and fifth graders, and the pictures pretty much speak for themselves, but the college students that came and spoke and worked with our students did an outstanding job of not only talking through what they had brought with them, but the whys of the purpose and what each of these little bugs and insects do for our Next, we have our preschool program, and I wanted to highlight this because we have a new preschool teacher that started this year. Mrs. Bassinger is in her first year, just graduated from Radford University. Dr. Polcha actually grabbed her at the job fair back in the spring. It was like, we've got, we've got to interview her, and so we were very fortunate to snag her. So you can see just some of the pictures of things that she has them doing in class. We have a packed house in preschool this year. We have 19 students, and we are busting at the seams. It's a really good thing. You can walk by that room, and on any given day, you're not seeing the same thing twice. But it's a really good program and is definitely growing. So what did our instructional day look like? Again, I think the pictures speak for themselves. Our little girl on the right is a first grade student working on a science experiment. Our little guy in the middle, just basically reinforcing those daily skills. And then our little girl on the right doing her seat work after having came back from her reading group. So you see most of our kindergartners in first grade participating in one of these types of things throughout the morning. And then looking at the picture on the right, all of our Western Ware kiddos participated in Roundup Day, and that is a program with Ms. Arnold's class where they do different rounding math activities, and then they get to round up and wear their cowboy attire for the day. So they always have, I think that's a longstanding tradition in her classroom and one that the kids really enjoy. And then you can just see some of our other students who are actively participating and engaged in learning throughout the day as well. Our science club is part of our after-school program, and cannot say enough good things about the after-school program. We have the tutoring that is Mondays and Wednesdays, and then we have, or excuse me, Tuesdays and Thursdays, and then on Wednesday afternoons, our fifth grade has a science club. Right now, we're at 16 students, and we feel very, very fortunate to have that number of students, and that is a huge thank you to the division for being able to provide that transportation piece, because I think without that, I don't know that we would have that many students who could attend. But you can see here, they're working on the solar system. Students had an absolute blast. They have done some of the coolest experiments. And then on the next, on this slide, they're working on moon phases using Oreos. I think, of course, the Oreos were the big hit at the end of the activity, but nonetheless, the students really, really enjoyed it. And our fifth grade SOL, science SOL this year is changing, so from what our understanding is, the rigor of that test is supposed to be increased quite a bit and is more application-based. So we're trying to pull in different experiments through our science club, in addition to the daily instruction, to hopefully help bolster those kids in their performance on that test. And then wanted to finish off with learning that takes place outside of the school setting, and our students in preschool through second grade attend the pumpkin patch field trip together. We started that right after COVID because there were so many kids who had missed that, that field trip, so we started just making that a primary grades event. So you can see there that everyone, of course, is having a good time. They visited the Thorn Spring pasture in Pulaski, so just trying to keep that local and participate in local activities that our community offers. And then next, our fourth graders participated or attended the Wilderness Grove Regional Museum Day. Students had an absolute blast. It was a very... It was a very well-planned, very well-organized event, and the students, I don't think they realized how much history there is here in Pulaski County. One student, when they were watching the video in the first part, when they went inside the house, couldn't believe that Pulaski County was on TV and that they had did this little documentary clip as though, you know, we were famous because we were on TV. So it was just good to see these kids be immersed in things that are in Pulaski County that they really had no idea about. And then fifth grade, we had our ag day. We were glad to bring that back as well. That was out at the fairgrounds and the students, it was a cold day, but I think it was nice for the students to get out and see, again, other aspects of learning within Pulaski County. So we were very appreciative to the Virginia Cooperative Extension for bringing that to And that's all I have. I'm usually present in the spring and feel like I have like a ton of pictures, and I went to sit down and do this, and I'm like, it's only November, I don't have all my pictures. So do you all have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next instructional focus is for DECA month. Ms. Underwood, the marketing teacher and advisor for DECA, and a group of her students are working hard to conduct three outreach activities during the month, and they're here this, this evening to tell us a little about that.
Thank you for having us tonight. My name's Olivia Virus, and I'm the DECA president. I'm here with the following members of my board tonight. Chief Executive Officer and DECA Advisor, Ms. Kristy Underwood. Marketing Student Intern and Business Ambassador, Michaela Chandler. Vice President of Leadership, Ella Talbert. And DECA School Spirit Ambassador, Abby Farmer. On Wednesday, November 2nd, our chapter celebrated Virginia DECA Day by offering every member and CTE teacher a free Hodgepodge cookie. We have been selling Hodgepodge cookies as a fundraiser this school year. We have been very successful this fund, this fundraiser, and we were able to pay all the dues for all 27 students, student members this year. We were also able to afford the pay, to pay the fees for each member who wanted to compete at district competitions on Wednesday, November 16th, 2022, at Renault College. Virginia DECA prepares emerging leaders and entrepreneurs in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management. As part of a comprehensive marketing program, DECA helps students research potential careers in marketing and management, as well as understand the education and training requirements to pursue business careers. Students in marketing courses learn skills in selling, human resource management, administration, career planning, job acquisition, buying, promotion, marketing principles, and economics. Many students also work in marketing-related fields and receive on-the-job training. DECA is a co-curricular student organization that exposes its members to leadership training and a competitive events program to evaluate marketing skills and knowledge. Currently, we are working on the following initiatives. Chapter membership campaign. We are looking for 20 alumni professional members to join our DECA club. The cost is $20 per member per year. Please speak to one of us if you are interested. Promotional campaign. Three student outreach activities, outreach activities, three alumni success stories, and three community outreach activities by December 1st, 2022. Thank you.
I have a question, if you don't mind. It's a lot of activities. That's a wonderful plan that you all have.
Thank you.
And this is kind of personal. What, do you all have plans to go into marketing or finance or economics field after you graduate? And what do you, what do you plan to do?
I plan to hopefully attend Renault College and get a business degree, and hopefully after that, own a salon and be able to do everything on my own with that business degree.
Good, that's a good point. Anybody else?
I'm not sure what college I'll be attending yet, but I do want to get a business degree and then run my own esthetician salon.
Nice.
At the moment, I'm actually working at Southern Hard's Boutique owned by Kristy, and I am working with.
She wants to do, she, Mr. Cunningham has any marketing function they're having, and she's not a talker, and then it's like, I knew she was across the room introducing herself to him, so she is very involved with the Chamber of Events, something she's very excited about. Abby has worked on our team, she's our spirit coordinator. We work with a team of booster clubs for different sporting events. I'm sure you've seen some of our TikToks plugging around, and we did that through Booster Club, the Little Booster Club, so Abby's been very helpful as well.
Yes, I help on the marketing campaign for the Booster Club. I also have been running our school's Cougar mascot through the CTE building, through marketing with Ms. Underwood. So I have been getting us people to wear the suit, organizing people to take care of them at the games. I've made some flyers that we put out in the CTE building to see if anybody was interested. I've helped with the Hodgepodge cookies, so we go around and, actually Ella made us a nice little flyer that we put out in the hallways, and we go around and we market out our cookies so that we can see if anybody wants to buy them, and we use that to fund our DECA program.
Nice.
It just sounds like such great real-world experience.
Like fun.
That's so important.
Of course.
I love, I love hearing from the young ladies because I love to know what they're planning to do and what they are doing.
Ms. Underwood, do you know how many students you currently have in marketing classes at school?
So we have, we're, these are girls, the first girls and girls that I've had. This is the first class I've had since freshman year. So we have about 25 students in each class. I teach three blocks of marketing, and we have advanced internal marketing running through those classes right now, so about 75 students. And then we have 20 to 60 involved in the work design program as well, so.
135. Yeah. In any particular career that you're saying that most of your students are leaning towards or?
They all love marketing. That's why I have business degrees, accounting, marketing, social media, fashion. Social media is a huge news about digital marketing. They really want to do that. We have some who want to learn sports marketing, who have kids that are at Virginia Tech, and all this little marketing stuff, right? Just business in general. So we try to make sure that they have the fun and the experiences, they have a real-world experience, because that's very important to me as a teacher, is those teams are my opportunities, not necessarily the bookwork, but those teams are my opportunities. So they may not know all the word, word you call it, but they do not pay them on these jobs.
It's, you know, of course, I'm highly interested in it because I spent my life in it, and, you know, the key in, in marketing is just, you know, it's, I've always told people that worked in our organization, it was, you know, people do business with people they like, they, they know they like and they trust. And, and so it's about getting to know your clients, and you get to know your clients not necessarily by talking, but by listening, and, and they'll tell you all about themselves. They'll tell you things you probably don't necessarily want to know. So, 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 yeah, get to know your clients, and, and, and when you do, people automatically will like you because you're showing interest in them. So, but it's exciting. I'd like to drop in one day and, and just sit in on some of y'all's classes.
Now, we had a customer do a quickie, so.
That's a good, that's a good thing. That's a good thing. Yeah, that's a good thing.
The thing you do is allowing us the opportunity to offer real-world experiences and trusting us with this opportunity, because the girls and the guys, that's what it's all about.
That's great.
Good. The next generation, you guys are going to run the world, so.
They will definitely run the world.
That's good. That's good.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item on the agenda are information items, and we have some information on our budget from Mr. Stafford.
Good evening.
We have to refer to you as the Honorable Chris Stafford now?
I don't know. Honorable might be a stretch.
Honorable Chris.
Members of, members of the school board like to present the budget analysis for October this evening. At this point, we're one, actually one-third of the, into the budget year. On the revenue side, our basic aid payments are currently based on our budgeted ADM 3,0831, and so those payments have not changed. However, with our September 30th enrollment, student enrollment number that we reported, that enrollment was 3,0796, which is 35 students less than what our budget was based on. So a little area of return at this point in the school year for our basic aid payments. They will adjust those based on that enrollment number, and of course, the, the final payments are based on the March 31st ADM number, but that's certainly something at this point that we will watch throughout the school year. We do know that we had an increase in, in enrollment, however, the net went down because we had a, you know, our class size got bigger, or kindergarten classes were bigger, but we did lose some to homeschooling and, and private schools this, this past year.
We lost 43 to the new private school and additional homeschool this year, so it more than makes up the 35 that is difference that we're having to work through with the budget. And, and it's just difficult to predict that. Homeschooling, you can kind of predict that that's going to go up a little bit each year, but with the, the incorporation of the new private school into the area, that wasn't something that was known at the time that our budget was built.
So equates to about 400, 430,000 dollars.
Yes, ma'am. So it's certainly something that we're going to keep an eye on and know that, and keep an eye on, not just that revenue, but of course, our costs and our expenditures as well. You know, just, just an area of concern, something we will, we will track and monitor, but something that.
It could mean the tightening of the belt during the second semester. We've kind of, coming out of COVID, we've opened it up to a large number of field trips, and of course, we absorb the cost of fuel for that and paying the bus drivers and, and other areas, too. We've kind of been wide open in, because we're back to normal, and people are happy to get back to normal, want to try to do some things they haven't been able to do in a few years, and, and we want to support that as much as possible, but we may have to cut back on some of that the second semester, once the budget picture becomes a little more clear.
And obviously, like all of us, the, our own gas tanks, the, the cost of fuel has significantly impacted our budget. We're, we do have some ability in the budget. We, we've made a intentional decision to, we have a little bit of money for bus replacements that we are going to hold on to as a fuel reserve. It's about 135,000 in addition to the 450,000 that we have in our fuel budget that we're going to hold on to as a reserve. But as Dr. Sears said, it, you know, based on the current prices and, and air consumption, it probably may not be enough at this point, based on, on fuel prices, you know, but those fluctuate. So we will, may come back to you at, at the next meeting and talk about some, some, some changes to, to transportation and our field trips.
Were you ever going to see any of that tobacco money? The tobacco tax money? I believe we were promised some of that?
That's a good question. I know that's something we will.
It was, and I don't know how we want to approach it, but it was originally written into the, the joint agreement that would automatically go into our capital fund, but since then, the county administrator has directed that we need to come and ask for that money. So we need to engage with the county in a conversation about how that, those funds would become available, and, you know, he has indicated that we need to ask for it as part of our operational funds, but the agreement that was done by both boards had it going into capital funds, and we've never reconciled that with them, but we can try to initiate those conversations in the coming months and figure that piece of it out.
Well, an agreement's an agreement. I think we should go by the agreement. I'll be there for me.
Okay. So just to, I guess to continue on, our state sales tax payments are slightly ahead of budget. Many of the other state revenues from a lot of refunded accounts have not begun yet. Air major expenditure areas are under budget for this point in the year, except for operations. So, so transportation is actually, you know, we are under budget there, so overall, we're in good shape. Operations is slightly over budget, but we're always a little bit over budget at this point in operations due to some of the property insurance and things that get paid in other maintenance contracts that get paid in July, and kind of affects the, the budget, looking at it on an annual basis, so that'll correct itself. I do want to mention the projected county general fund transfer for October is 52,202. That leaves 11,548,378, or 72% available for the remainder of the fiscal year. That's kind of an odd amount to me because, or a very small amount to, to transfer from the, from the county, but what we're.